Well, good evening and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, June 13, 2016. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Polika?
Here.
Mayor Protempiana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
I am here, thank you. And we have a quorum this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
Do you have a modification? It's come to my attention that two items in the regular agenda do need to be public hearings, so I would like to propose that the special land use for 567 Livernoy be moved from Item 7B to 5A after the presentations, and then former Item 7E, the consideration of obsolete property rehabilitation district establishment, be public hearing number two, so Item 5B.
Thank you. Other changes or adjustments to the agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any discussion on the agenda as modified? All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the next item of business, which is presentations, and we have, I believe, three presentations this evening. The first one is always a fun and exciting one for us here, because we haven't done it a lot in the last several years, but we've been doing it recently, and that is the introduction of our new police officers. So Chief Collins, do you want to have those honors?
Thank your honor. It's almost becoming like a habit now, isn't it?
I know, it's good.
We're very excited to announce and introduce to the community our two newest police officers. This is, this brings our current list almost to an end. First off, we would like to introduce Romel Deladlo. I probably messed that up again. Romel, I have known, I like this introduction, even though I mess up his last name all the time. Romel I've known for several years. He is a Ferndale High School grad. He played football with my kids when they were in the program, so I've known him for quite a few years. He went to Ferris State University, four-year degree in criminal justice. The last year of that, he went to the police academy during the last phase of his college career. He came to us, he tried to go to Ann Arbor. Apparently that didn't work out for him very well, so we scooped him up in this last round. We are very excited to have Romel, and he is here. We introduced him when we were swarming with his family, but he's here alone tonight. So we're very happy to have Romel here as our, almost our latest police officer. So congratulations, Romel. Next, if I can have Paul Skamski. Paul comes to us, he is going to be interesting. As you can see, we've tried to get a little bit of diversity here. Diversity comes in a lot of different ways. Paul here was born in Poland. His parents are from Poland. He still has a bit of a Polish accent. You'll hear him when he talks. It's kind of cool. Paul moved here when he was eight years old. He went to Sterling Heights High School once he came into the United States, and he went to, I believe, Macomb Community College for his criminal justice degree, and he put himself through the Macomb Police Academy. He has a long history of volunteer. He worked for Meals on Wheels, and we scooped Paul up before Hazel Park tried to get their hands on him here. So this is Paul Skamski. He's got, I think you're living in Hamtramck, right? Isn't that something? So this is Paul Skamski. Thank you, folks.
Well, welcome, gentlemen. Have a safe and long career in Ferndale. Appreciate it, thanks. All right. All right, our next presentation is the Ferndale Area District Library, and I see several people from the library today. You're going to tag-team this. Okay, yes. Come on up. We've got board members, we've got directors, we've got maybe a quorum of the library board, I don't know.
Thank you very much. My name is Jessica Kaiser. I'm the Director of the Ferndale Area District Library. With me today is Adam Steinman. He is a trustee with us. And we also have Monique Kerzig, who is the Vice President of the Board, Kelly Farah, Kevin Yezbeck, who is the Treasurer, and I think that's all of them, here to show their support. But we're here today to give a brief report on the state of the library currently and the future direction. So, once a year, we try to come out, oh, where's the, oh, yeah, thank you. Thanks.
There we go.
Thanks. So we try to come out annually and let you know our statistics and what we're doing to strengthen the community. So in fiscal year 2015, we counted 133,836 visitors to the library. That's about 2,575 visitors every week. We circulated 168,992 items. We had almost 9,000 people attend our programs, and we answered 47,608 reference questions. We are providing access to technology, lifelong learning, appreciation of art, music, and culture, youth programming with a focus on the importance of play, and of course, that research support with those 47,000 reference questions. We are enriching the Ferndale schools with expanded collaborative programming and media resources for all of our Ferndale students. We're an anchor in the downtown. Our concerts, lectures, and community meetings are bringing people into downtown, and we're hearing that they are also frequenting other businesses and exploring our town when they're coming here for the library. We're a member of the library network. That gives our residents access to 65 network libraries. That's over a million books, CDs, and DVDs that can all be delivered to our Ferndale library for free for our patrons. In 2015, we did a community-wide survey, and what we heard from the community was that they wanted us to be open more hours every week. They would like more of our programs, more of the bestselling books, more movies, more eBooks, and downloadable audiobooks. The challenge to that is that our net revenue available for library operations is down 35% since 2009. That's a combination of a drop in property tax revenue and an increase in our annual debt repayment schedule for paying for our building renovation. So our decline in revenue that we talked about is about $316,000 less every year with a cumulative loss of $843,000 and a rise in our bond payments that continue to go up every year. So what we've done in response, we've cut costs. We've saved $7,000 in liability insurance by rebidding that, $12,000 in our janitorial service. We've hired a collection company to help us recover seriously overdue and lost items, and we laid off two staff members. The most dramatic cut was to reduce our hours of operation from 56 hours a week to 45. We have engaged in many fundraising initiatives and partnerships to try to mitigate some of that loss. We've done different events like the Day of Books and Roses. We volunteer bartend at the Pig and Whiskey, and we did a capital campaign called Make Your Mark on the Ferndale Library. And we've seen some success with that, but it's not enough to make up that big gap. So in thinking long-term, we reformed in 2015 with the city of Ferndale and the Ferndale Public Schools as our partners. We went from being a PA 164 library to a district library. The big differences are that the PA 164 statute is much older. It was enacted in 1877. It capped our funding at two mills, and our city was acting as the fiscal agent, and we had six-year board terms. Under the District Library Establishment Act, it was formed in 1989. It caps our mills at four. It makes us an independent taxing authority and four-year board terms. So with this new district library establishment, it gives us an opportunity to look at our funding, because we do have a responsibility under our agreement to pass our own millage as a district library. So what we have currently is we are putting a ballot proposal on the August ballot. We are proposing replacing the current funding, which was approved 10 years ago at two mills and has been rolled back to 1.88, with a total of 3.5 mills. This will replace all of the current tax funding. With our new offerings with the district library millage, we would be able to restore our previous hours and add a half-day of service on Sunday. We would be able to enhance our partnerships with the Ferndale Public Schools and provide greater access to digital, print, and multimedia resources. For the average homeowner in Ferndale, the new millage would cost about $210 a year or $1750 a month, and that's an increase from what people are currently paying of $97 a year or $8 a month. And we see the library as a pillar in the community, along with the Chamber of Commerce, the city of Ferndale, the DDA, and the schools, and we believe that all of these institutions require investment in order to be a successful community. That is the end, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, good. Is there any questions, Jessica? Well done, very nice. And continue to be amazed at your PowerPoint presentation skills.
Thank you.
Way better than anybody else that comes here.
Well, thank you.
Including ours, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oops, sorry. Karen, hi.
You're now officially challenged, Karen, and you're...
Thrown down the challenge.
There you go.
Thank you. Our next presentation is the Ferndale, speaking of one of the pillars in our community, the Ferndale Public Schools. And I see the superintendent here, so I'm guessing that you're doing that presentation this evening, superintendent. We're going to see what his slides are like.
Yeah, I know.
Pressure's on.
I would just like to say I don't think I have an in-house PowerPoint expert in the school district, so I think I need to spend more time with your resident expert.
Are you going to sing your presentation?
If you'd like me to. Thank you, Greg, for asking. Hey, do anything for the school district. So I first thank you for having me. I always love presenting in front of the city, and it's great to have the library here, too. As I was reflecting, I think for all three institutions, isn't it sort of sad that the state won't fund our institutions to the way that they should be to provide the services that we want? So it's just the reality of our state, and we continue to try and make sure that we provide the best services, all of us, for our residents. So I want to give a kind of quick update on some things that go on the school district, as well as the sinking fund millage that the school board is going out for in August. So as some people might not know, schools are no longer funded by property taxes. So I know people say all the time, "Well, you know, property values are going up." That means more money for the schools. It does not. We are funded per pupil, which is kind of an odd way, that every student is sadly worth a little over $7,000. I hate putting price tags on students' heads, but that's what the state does. So when you look at where we add up, we're right near Hazel Park and Madison, but Berkeley, Oak Park, Claussen, Royal Oak, Farmington, Lamphier, Southfield, Birmingham, Bloomfield all make significantly more than we do per student. We make $7,900. Bloomfield's on the top end, makes $12,000. And of course, we know it's so much cheaper to educate a Ferndale student than a Bloomfield Hills student, of course. So that's what the state has set up for us, so we live within our means, as everyone else does, but it is the reality of where we are in terms of how we're funded as a school district. You must be smarter than the PowerPoint blank. There we go. So how do we spend our money? When we look at our total expenditures, we have decreased our budget significantly from $32.2 million to $31.4. So we have increased our spending, if you look at in the classroom, which is our instruction by a million, why, we've decreased overall spending by $2 million. So therefore, we are putting more money back into the classrooms while cutting our overall budget. So how do we compare to other districts? And this is based on our last year's audit by Platt Moran. So we are, at average, with other school districts now in our state. The one piece of the pie that you won't see that we don't have is capital outlay. We don't put any money into capital outlay of our buildings. The community has been great about approving bond funds, but bond funds are for particular projects. You do those projects, and that money no longer exists. It is not an ongoing thing. So we can't go out for bonds usually for about another 10 years, so that's 10 years of deferred maintenance of things that are going on in the building. As you think about your own house, if you defer all your maintenance for 10 years, what will happen? So what's our need? Well, our bond funds will be all complete this summer. Those funds will be exhausted, and again, all the projects have been done that the school district said would be done and that the community expected. Any funds additional moving forward to do things like, per se, the boiler at Roosevelt that went out this year that we had to use remaining bond funds for. If the boiler at JFK goes out, that has to come out of general funds. So it really becomes a boiler versus teacher sort of situation. There is no other pot of money. There's no other pot of money we can raise. Even if we increase enrollment, we still have to hire more teachers for the students. We don't want to just increase class size in order to pay for a boiler, because the education of our students comes first. So what other options does the state give us? And of course, the state is great at making up titles, so this is called a sinking fund, which is probably the worst thing you could call something, but that is what the state gives us. So we have bond funds and sinking funds, and the only thing the state allows us to go back to the community and ask for to support the school district. It's really what's called a pay-as-you-go. It's a limited property tax. It's for building, maintenance, and infrastructure. That's all it can be used for. There's no debt, there's no interest. Currently, we are spending money for the interest in all our bonds. This is not an interest. This is money that comes to the district every year for the maintenance and infrastructure of the district. It's a tax that is levied every year, and it's revenue generating. The sinking fund revenues cannot be used for general fund expenditures, per se salaries, teachers. It has to be used for buildings. As you know, the state is very particular about how you use money. There's actually a manual that's about this thick about what you can use sinking fund for. I can put in built-in cabinets, but I cannot buy a table. I can do the electrical for a projector, but I cannot buy the projector. And if the school district uses sinking fund dollars in any inappropriate way, the remedy from the state is they take all your money, and you can never go out for a sinking fund again, ever. So the school district has to keep in its parameters. So why is this coming up in the school district now? For some reason, Ferndale has not ever had a sinking fund. I can't tell you, your IT support. So we'll go quickly.
I have a button up here that does.
Can I get one of those for my board meetings? So Berkeley, just to show some of the area districts all have sinking funds. Some up to 4.5 mills, as Clarenceville, or Oak Park has three, some at .7, at one, but we're really the only district in the immediate area that does not have a sinking fund for its buildings. So during the building assessment for the 2012 bond, there were $32.2 million worth of needs identified. Due to the way the state funding works for bonds, only $21 million could go out for. So that's $10 million worth of work. And simple things, carpet. Come see some of our buildings and our carpet. There's no money to replace carpet. It gets a ton of traffic. If you see our band room and our orchestra room in the high school, you can see some vintage carpet. We have opened up our football stadium and the track to the community, and we'll continue to keep that open and our facilities open for our residents to use, but that track and that turf needs to be replaced on a regular basis. And it's cost about $500,000 for that turf to be replaced, and we can't just put grass back over it. And that is rented out to multiple groups all year long. We just had the Relay for Life this weekend there, so it does get a lot of community use. Simple things, classroom furniture, there's no money for that, and just regular mechanical upgrades. When you look at your own house, you know how old your air conditioner and your boiler is or your furnace and, you know, how long it will take. So what have we done to try and make sure that we're being good stewards of our funds? We've closed three buildings. We're gaining about $1.5 million for the sale of that building, and that $1.5 million won't even cover all the roof work that needs to happen in the next five to seven years. We're reusing items for every building that we're taking offline. Our kitchen equipment is moving. We're even taking the ceilings out of Jefferson and moving those to JFK. All the technology is being reused, sinks, toilets, bathroom partitions, any new furniture, as well as we have done auctions, two auctions of all excess furniture within those buildings. So our current needs, and we did a assessment by Platt Moran, as well as a roof assessment by a company, Structure Tech, over the next 10 years, we're projected to need around $13 million worth of work. Roofs, exterior work, interior work, HVAC, electrical. So this is about $1 million per year, give or take, of ongoing maintenance. So just some quick slides. This is some of our roof that needs work, upwards to $3 million. It's going to shut down on me again, telling me. Exterior, and you can't really see her, but rusted outdoors. We have concrete and brick that needs replacement, soffits that are rotted, as well as rusted areas. You can come see our lovely swampy baseball field. We had to cancel 10 games this year because of that, because we don't have proper drainage. All the windows, this is simple things, all the windows need recaulking on the high school building. There's a lot of windows there. We have active leaks, you know, the backstop that's going to need to be replaced because it's becoming a safety issue. HVAC, again, some items we have, Henry Ford Museum is called and would like them, once we take them out. So you can see many of the items. We have boilers that have over their life expectancy. Interiors, again, some of these are vintage, some I presented to the seniors, and two of them, as I showed the slides, went, "That's the same when I went to school there." And if any of you know Roger Smith, I make a comment, who's our principal all the time, that, "Roger, that must have been the same when you went there." If you know Roger, feel free to tell him that. But we have many things that are original to the building to the '50s, some that are becoming safety concerns. So this bathroom here is actually the bathroom I use, so I just want to point out that the superintendent uses the vintage equipment also, so we don't do anything special for central office. Electrical, fire alarms, you know, exterior lighting, things that just need regular replacement. So we're affectionately calling this the Two Cups of Coffee Millage. For the price of two cups of coffee a month, the school will be able to bring in about $850,000 a year in order to maintain the facilities that the community has put so much money in over the years and to continue to be good stewards. So that's generally what's going on in the school district. And now it shuts down.
Right on time.
Right on time. Yeah, nice job, Mayor. Any questions?
Are there any questions of the superintendent? Blake, on one of the earlier slides, which we can't see...
Yes, I'll get right back to you.
Would you talk where it showed the enrollment? It actually shows an increasing enrollment from last year, but a flat revenue. What happened there?
So part of it is the, just the natural increase that you have with staff and other things, but also our revenue streams come from many areas. You know, even though we get the $7,000 per student, then there's also special ed funding, title funding, 31A funding. For example, I got an email at 4:15 that we get $1 million in our adult ed funding. Well, that was randomly cut by $200,000 next year, and our budget is going to our board Wednesday. So I spent this afternoon, before coming here, cutting $200,000 out of adult ed funding because the state decided they weren't going to fund it to the same level. So it's...
Yeah. So it's an imperfect correlation, student population to revenue, because there's other factors that affect that thing. Any other questions of... All right.
Thank you very much for taking the time today.
Thanks. And that'll be on the August ballot, correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, the next item of business is now added from the former regular agenda, and we'll start with former regular agenda item B, which we'll now call, I don't know, something else, which is the consideration of the special land use request for 567 Livernoy. And Justin, are you going to introduce that item, and then we're going to have a public hearing? So he'll do a brief introduction of it. We'll do a public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. We'll have comments, discussion, and a vote of council.
Sounds good. As the mayor mentioned, we're here to discuss the special land use application for 567 Livernoy. The applicants were here last month for their small winemaker and brewer's license. The applicant is proposing a, improving the existing building. The existing building is, has been currently, or previously, a vacant industrial property. Applicants intending to improve the building for use as a production facility with office storage and a tap room. As you already know, Axel Brewing's Livernoy property would serve as the public face of their growing company. They have a primary production facility in Royal Oak, so this Livernoy facility would provide patrons an opportunity to learn about the brewing process and then sample Axel products actually on-site. There's an indoor tap room that is a, that would be open year-round, and then during warmer months, an outdoor seating area would be open with picnic tables, and that is actually the special land use application. The production facility, tap room, storage, those items are all permitted in the mixed-use two districts, so the special land use, outdoor seating requires the special land use.
So that is specifically the topic that is before us this evening, is the special land use for the outdoor seating?
Exactly. So as required by the ordinance, also, within this district, amplified noise is prohibited after 10:00 p.m. So were this, should this special land use be approved? There's already that condition built in in ordinance that, in addition to the normal noise ordinance levels that have to be required for any use in the city, there's an additional 10:00 p.m. cutoff for any amplified noise in the district. So just a brief background, the planning commission held two public hearings, once in April, once in May, to discuss the special land use and site plan. After the April meeting, or during the April meeting, the commission directed the applicant to revisit their site plan to reconfigure the outdoor seating, study on-street parking, and reevaluate, excuse me, explore a shared parking agreement. Those items were addressed at the May meeting, and the planning commission unanimously approved the revised site plan and recommended special land use approval for the special land use. Within your packet...
The vote wasn't unanimous on the parking plans.
Correct. Not for the parking reduction. There were three motions at that meeting.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yep. Thank you. So within your packet, there was also items from both of those meetings. Additionally, there were letters in support and against the proposed project that were included in the packet. I only received one new letter in support later today that I'm happy to provide counsel after the meeting as well. So with that, staff recommends approval of the application based on the completed application in alignment with the master plan. The proposed development fits within the walkable mixed-use district that has already been in existence in Livernoy and also we think would continue efforts as part of this plan. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions of them before or after the public hearing.
Well, we'll do the public hearing first. So at this point, with that introduction, I will open it up to a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the city council this evening on the consideration of a special land use request for 567 Livernoy? Yes, sir, please. Come on up to the mic and give us your name and address, if you don't mind.
Good evening. My name is David Kane. I'm an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Donald Place, who's present, and he owns a property at 630 Stratford.
Good evening. My name is David Kane. I'm an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Donald Place, who's present, and he owns a property at 630 Stratford, which is approximately 68 feet to the north and on the adjacent street. And his particular concern is with the parking configuration and does not believe it to be adequate. The configuration for 40 spaces is based upon the tap room of 4,000 square feet, and this outdoor seasonal use appears to double the capacity during the warmer months. And with the outdoor fireplace proposal, it appears that it would be even longer than, they want to extend it even longer in the summer. If you go within 500 feet, and in fact, there's a, there's a letter online from, from the attorney for the applicant who indicates, it's a May 9th letter from Kelly Allen, that indicates that their proposal is 100 patrons seating inside and outside seating for 100 patrons. So it appears that the applicant wants to double the capacity in the warmer months as well. And my client's concern, being in an adjacent street, that the 40 spaces, 35 of which would be provided by the city along Livernoy, would be insufficient during the seasonal use of it, and that there would be inadequate to address. And also, as an additional, if the applicant were required to provide the onsite parking solely by himself, their proposal is only one handicap spot, that would be inconsistent with the ADA provisions for 40 spaces. They would require a minimum of two. And my client is, you know, with the overflow during the summer months, would contend that probably would be even three or four should be required, especially when you're serving 200, an estimated, you have capacity for 200 spaces and 200 patrons, and you have only one handicap parking space on the plans, that that would be inadequate. The noise reduction amplification issue was addressed, and I was glad to hear it's required in this area, because that was another concern of Mr. Place's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Yes, come on up.
Hello, my name is Monique Kerzig. I live at 320 Stratford, and I would just like to voice general support for Axel Brewing and a tap room in the neighborhood. I'm really looking forward to sitting with my neighbors and having a beer. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council this evening? Sure, come on up, give us your name and address, if you don't mind.
Hi, my name is Eric Zaroski. I live at 2932 Inman. I also wanted to express my support for it. We're actually, we visit Livernoy more often, because our dog groomer's there, I bike around town, we walk around town. I think it'd be a nice connector for the city and get us into a different part of town that we don't, that we're just getting into. So I'm for it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else like to address council on this proposal? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Dana Zaroski. I also live at 2932 Inman, and I presented at the planning commission as well. Eric and I, we take beer cases, and we just got back from Nashville and Louisville, and I just think that Axel would be a great addition to our little town of Ferndale, and kind of make us more into the beer community that Michigan is a part of, and I would like to see it more in our neighborhood, so.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Jill Giacchino. I live at 375 West Marshall. I walk my dog up and down Livernoy all the time, and we also go to the same groomer, and just noticed that there's not a lot going on in Livernoy, and my husband and I are expanding our family and excited to have other options in the area.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion, and now I will open it up to comments and questions of council. And I guess before we begin, Justin, in fact, I'd just have you address specifically the parking concerns that were addressed by the gentleman, and I know that was a discussion at the planning commission, there's been a lot of discussions. Could you give us a reaction to his comments?
Yeah, absolutely. All of our parking requirements and the city's zoning ordinance are based on square footage. And so on the site plan that was included in the packet, you could see kind of the calculation there for what is required. And the planning commission does have the authority to grant a parking reduction, and effectively, that's what they did. There's a number of criteria that they must show in order to grant that reduction, including on-street parking study, which was done and showed, I believe, 34, 35 parking spaces on Livernoy nearby the property. Also, the applicant provided a shared parking agreement nearby for 33 or so spaces nearby the property, and the requirement is they have to be within a certain number of feet. And also, they...
More than one? Is that my understanding, that there were two shared parking agreements?
Correct. Correct. Also, access to other modes of transportation. On this particular site plan, the applicant provided at least 15 bicycle parking stations, which is probably the most I've ever seen on a site plan. Also included stroller parking, which is also new on the site plan, and then...
Stroller parking.
Stroller parking as well, to elicit a family-friendly atmosphere. They're also, if you look further into the business model, they're very focused on providing a walkable business, trying to have neighbors visit from the neighborhood, and so that's, that was a factor in the decision as well, along with the Livernoy corridor improvements that were done a few years ago. And those improvements actually will be part of the repaving plan in the coming year, or next year. And so the factor, all those factors were part of that discussion. I don't know if that answers the entire question, but...
Yep. That does. All right, does anyone have any questions of Justin?
Just because it was originally listed on the regular agenda item for the public hearing tonight, were neighbors noticed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments of council?
Mayor, if I could, one suggested language with respect to the recommended motion that's included, as it relates to the proposed parking agreements that were identified, there is a provision of the ordinance that suggests that those parking agreements are required to be filed with the county register of deeds. So that might be a condition that you would add to any potential motion that you were to pass.
Okay.
All right, I would like to move that the city approve the special land use requests for the 567 Livernoy Sedwell number 242533435-041, to permit outdoor seating with the following findings as listed in the council packet, and conditions that all amplified noise is prohibited after 10:00 PM in the MXD 2 district, and that all parking agreements be filed with the county register of deeds.
With support.
It's been moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any additional comments, questions, or discussion of council?
I, you know, I have some concerns over that stroller parking, that it might encourage strolling, drinking and strolling, but...
Oh.
Oh, my goodness.
We are on a roll tonight.
I do, I do appreciate the concerns that have been raised. I appreciate the applicant addressing, I think, taking some serious time to address those, and going back to the planning commission. I was impressed by the number of letters and emails that we received, and we really do read those, I want residents to know, and in particular, from some of the residents in the neighborhood, and notwithstanding the gentleman's concerns, and we share those concerns, I was impressed by the support in the neighborhood, and this seems like a reasonable plan to me.
If I may, to the chair, I too think this is a great business plan, and I appreciate them putting it here. I was one of the no votes on the parking variance, and I'm not 100% comfortable with parking, but I'm comfortable enough to move forward. I would like to direct the city, though, to have discussion about expanding the residential parking program to streets surrounding this, to help mitigate the problem for the residents.
Through the chair, I'm very excited about this project, and I think the three concerns for me were about lighting, sound, and parking. And I had an opportunity to have a discussion with my neighbors, as well as the owner, and express my concerns about those three things. And full disclosure, if you took a straight line from the outdoor patio and parking lot, you would hit my house on the other side of Livernoy, and so on Farmdale. And so had an opportunity to talk to a lot of residents around this area, and they're very excited about it coming, but many expressed the light, sound, and parking issues, and I think they've been adequately addressed by the planning commission, and particularly with the shared parking. I think change is coming to lots of our streets and corridors in Ferndale, and we're seeing a lot of different types of businesses come in. And if we don't entertain how to accommodate them, that meets the needs of the corridor, but also our residents, then we will continue not to be revitalizing the corridor, and we'll have more vacant properties, which does no one any good. And so I'm really pleased that this is coming. It's unfortunate I don't drink beer. So I encourage you to have some wine on the side. So I'm really excited for this, and I think their approach to bicycling and connecting to the community and supporting the Dales Neighborhood Group as a future endeavor is something that they're willing to do. One less.
Yes, please.
I, too, am not a beer drinker, don't throw anything at me, but I am excited about the development that's happening on Livernoy, and that that area is now being utilized far more than it, than it used to be. So community's happy with it, I'm happy with it.
And I would just add to that, because I agree with that, and just so the public knows, because I know we share this opinion, that we're not looking to recreate an entertainment district on Livernoy. The idea is not to make bars and restaurants the theme of Livernoy. This is not a traditional bar, it won't operate like a traditional bar, and we hope that the other development that it attracts will not be that, but will be the kinds of things that we've talked about, art studios and boutiques, and an occasional cafe, and that sort of thing. And so I hope that that's what it's a catalyst for, that's just to put out there, we want development, but we're not looking for a second downtown, we don't need one, and that's not the intent, certainly not our intent for the development on Livernoy. All right, we have a motion and a support, so if there's no further comments, Martin, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Polka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lisa May.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Moving on now to the second public hearing, which was formerly regular agenda item E, consideration of the obsolete property rehabilitation district establishment. And Justin, you're going to introduce that one as well, correct?
So as part of a recent development that was approved last year by council for a special land use and rezoning, the St. James, former St. James School and convent, that plan was proposed, and is still proposed, to be a senior living facility. And as part of that process, you know, the buildings, the buildings are constructed from 19, you know, between 1925 and 1930, so there's extensive renovations and upfront investment bringing that building up to a livable standard for, for the potential seniors that will live there. So as part of that request, the city received a petition to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation act, or Oprah District. As we spoke about previously, an Oprah District is one of, you know, the many incentives that the state has enacted that communities can take advantage of. Communities like Pontiac and Ypsilanti have used Oprah Districts to incentivize economic development in areas where there's functionally obsolete properties, that's a key condition of this act, and for properties that require significant investment or rehabilitation, in this case, rehabilitation. So JS Senior Living is the applicant who requested the petition for the city to consider utilization of this incentive. It would be the first district in the city of Ferndale, much like a Brownfield redevelopment, and Oprah is a similar incentive tool, delays the immediate tax penalty for making an investment in an obsolete property such as this. So sort of a unique property in that the existing taxable value is zero at being a former church and former school, so the requested abatement period that will be discussed at a future meeting, you know, the taxable value would increase based on that latest assessment, and no longer be tax exempt after that period. So the process for Oprah's, since this is the first one before council, it does not, establishing the district does not necessarily mean the applicant is automatically approved for this exemption, and there's no, the maximum abatement period would be 12 years, but this meeting does not set that, it's not automatically the duration of that period. So, so should council approve the creation of that district this evening, for those three proposed parcels, JS Senior Living would then submit an Oprah exemption certificate for staff, open county review, and then there would be a further public hearing with notice to all the taxing jurisdictions. So with the establishment of a district, which we're doing this evening potentially, notice was sent to the property owner as required by the Oprah Act. So with that, I'll have to answer any questions or...
And I'm going to go out on a limb and guess that there might be some representatives here. Don't know how I figured that out, but if you would like to just, you know, come on up and just give us a very brief executive summary of your plans, because, introduce yourself and tell us just a little bit, Father, of what you've got planned over there.
I would like to be part of the plan, but the church has property that is unusable for us, and just to put it back in decent order, would be way beyond our means, to the point of several million dollars. This senior living, which has been in process over the last two and a half or three years, opens the door to a useful consideration for that property, and something that the community, I think, would be well-served by. It's an immense investment because of the needs of the building and the changeover to senior living. And so the bank is ready, the people are ready, and we've been waiting, and the building continues to deteriorate. You can't have an empty building and just try to keep the rain out, just the cold and what have you, through the winter has compromised further, the plaster and what have you. So the bottom line is that it seems like the best possible use for that in a reasonable, financially responsible way.
Thank you. Thank you, Father. So with that, I will open up the public hearing, and is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on the consideration of an obsolete property rehabilitation district establishment this evening? Doesn't appear to be. So seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and I will open it up to the questions and comments of council at this point.
Just a general question, it's been a while since this came before us, what's the timeframe of this tonight?
So timeframe for the next public hearing?
No, when it'll open?
Oh, when it will open?
Well, you have to still come back to us, right? You said this doesn't set the definitions of the abatement?
Correct. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure when...
December 2017.
So...
Thank you.
Yeah. Correct. But after, if the district were established this evening, there would be another public hearing with proper notice requirements for the actual petition for, or, excuse me, the exemption certificate review.
Other comments or questions?
Yes. Oh. Through the... Can you, can you talk a little bit about the word district? So how can you create a district, which seems to me a broad area with multiple parcels in it? How can you designate a district to one property?
Sure. It's kind of, it's, it can be used a number of ways. So district, in this case, would be three parcels. case, would be three parcels. And I think Ypsilanti is an example where the entire downtown was used as an entire, I mean, that's more of a district, I guess, because there were multiple properties that were used to develop upper levels of properties. But it's just the language that the state used in this instance.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just curious, there, how did we treat this as a public hearing, or give public notice as opposed to the previous one? Because I noticed there were a number of addresses that we were given of who was notified. Is this done in the same manner?
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of a unique, but it's done in a different manner, actually, because with Oprah Districts, you only, for the establishment of the district, you only notify the properties that are included. In this instance, the district would only include properties owned by J.S. Senior Living and the church. So they were the only ones notified for this. For the next one would be, if this were approved, the next public hearing would be with the all taxing jurisdictions, so library, not DDA in this instance, but the state, Oakland County Parks. So the normal, everyone would be notified for, say, a Brownfield plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, I agree, Father, that it's needed, and we're, I am excited to help move it along, and I hope this helps, and I'm very supportive. So thank you.
Yeah. Through the chair, I get asked all the time when you're going to open. So I think the need is there, and so I'm very supportive of entertaining this Oprah District, too. And just so the residents know, that the state legislators passed a renewal for the Oprah District legislation earlier this year, right? So extended it.
Correct.
So we're taking advantage of that extension for the first time in Ferndale.
Right. And I believe it's been extended in the past. It's been, it's worked in a lot of communities. It's been a popular initiative.
I would just like to invoke the words of our dear friend and former colleague, Mike Lennon, who said, "It's great all these people who went to school there cannot return there."
If there's no further comments or questions, Marnie, would you call the roll?
Oh.
Oh, we haven't had a motion yet. I'm sorry. We need a motion.
I move that city council approve the attached resolution regarding establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district at the parcels listed below.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Pollocka. Now, final discussions, questions, comments?
Just a comment. I think, you know, we had a special meeting tonight about incentives for the city, and I think that we're going to be seeing the Oprah District a little more frequently in Ferndale. And that's it.
All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lees May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to call the audience. And this is the, an opportunity for the members that are here with us today to address council on any issue that they would like that's not on the agenda, because you could speak to that issue when we get to that part of the agenda. So if you'd like, you get three minutes to come on up and give us your name, your address, and speak for three minutes on anything that you'd like that's not on the agenda. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Seth Tompkins. I'm an attorney. I represent the owners of 1551 Academy. I was just, I'm here to bring to light to the city council that I have sent a letter to the city manager, I carbon copied all of you on it, asking that the moratorium on the medical marijuana facilities that have been in effect now, this is the 11th month that the moratorium has been in effect, and I just know that when the moratorium was put into effect, I was at that meeting, and I did not anticipate it was going to last this long. I'd asked that the city council take a look at the letter that I sent, and consider altering the moratorium in some manner to allow my client at least to move on with their application, and just bring it back to a discussion. And that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Okay?
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Anyone else that would like to address council this evening? Sure, come on up.
Good evening. My name's Tim Brennan.
Good evening.
2605 Highland Street. I represent the Ferndale Community Concert Band. And on a lighter note this evening, I'd just like to invite everyone present tonight to our finale concert of the 2015-2016 season, our inaugural season, which has been very successful. And the theme for this week's concert, it's on Father's Day, is salute to our fathers, not just our biological fathers, but our forefathers as well, as concert of patriotic music. And on the concert, we're going to finish, we're going to feature pieces by John Philip Sousa, Nobles of the Mystic Shrine, and The Stars and Stripes Forever. We have a saxophone soloist who is a member of the U.S. Coast Guard, the DC, the top band in the U.S. Coast Guard from Washington, DC. His name is Joe DeLeo. He's playing a Gershwin Fantasy by Ralph Martino. We're doing an Armed Forces salute, American Flourish by Robert W. Smith, American Algae by Frank T. Kelly, and God Bless America, believe that or not. So I'd like to invite everyone here, the council members and everyone, to come to our concert. It's at 3:00 PM, Sunday afternoon, June 19, at the Ferndale High School Auditorium. And on a final note, I'd just like to go on public record as saying we really appreciate the Ferndale Public Schools allowing us to use their facilities. Roger Smith, Mr. Pruitt, they have been a great asset to us, and we appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Come on up. Oh, I see coloring.
Mayor or council? You know, coloring for my daughter this time, nothing.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just wanted to draw attention to a, to a intersection that's, it's frequently traveled by foot traffic, but there's not a lot of visibility of that foot traffic, the corner of Plantavon and Worthington, as people are coming out of the parking lot behind the downtown district on the north, that'd be the northwest side. A lot of them are looking left, because they want to pull out and turn right, so they're looking for cars coming. But they're not looking right, where the pedestrians are entering the downtown area. And seen a couple of, you know, close calls, people walking dogs, and the dogs may be a little farther out than is, you know, that I'd be comfortable with. But, you know, it's a little concerning, and I have a two-year-old that sometimes gets a little ahead of me, too. So just wanted to draw some attention to it, because there's a lot of overgrowth that may be blocking it, or maybe even just the walls too high.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know Lloyd and the chief are both here, so they've heard you. If you guys want to just kind of run by that and see, see what your thoughts are on that intersection, that would be great. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll close the call to audience, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items that we enact in one motion unless something is pulled by council from the consent agenda. Let me read that for you now. A little bit of a long one this evening. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held May 23. Item B is the approval of a condolence resolution for Buwanadon Hunt, as submitted by our county clerk, and we have a resolution that I'll read in a moment. Item C is the approval to reappoint Jeannie Davis to the Arts and Culture Commission for a term ending December 31, 2017. Item D is the approval to appoint our DPW Director Lloyd Kirden as a representative, and DPW Deputy Director Matt Davis as alternate to the Sacra Board of Trustees for fiscal year 2017. Item E is the approval to amend the ordinances for annual license renewals for massage establishments and body decorating salons and artist licenses to expire on December 31 of each year. Item F is the approval to backfill two police officer positions and to conduct a recruitment to establish an eligibility for said positions, as submitted by our HR Director. Item G is the approval to utilize EMPCO to create and conduct the oral board interview process for fire sergeant and lieutenant promotions. Item H is the approval to increase compensation for precinct inspectors to $11 per hour, precinct chairpersons to $13 an hour, and receiving board members to a flat rate of $75 per election, and to authorize these incentives to the EPB specialists and precinct chairpersons in exchange for working all elections in a calendar year. Item I is the approval to pay the Michigan Municipal League dues totaling $7,421 for our fiscal year 2016-17, charged to the city council membership and dues account. Item J is the approval to authorize the police department to contract Allied Building Services to renovate the supervisor's office into two separate offices for a total amount of $8,875 to be charged to the building maintenance account. Item K is the approval for the city of Ferndale to enter into a 10-year agreement to continue partnership with the Oakland County Law Enforcement Mutual Aid, as submitted by our police chief. Item L is the approval to accept the settlement agreement with Michael Rowan, and authorization for the mayor and city attorney to execute the agreement after Mr. Rowan provides the city a finalized signed copy. Item M is the approval of a special event permit for the 2016 Pig and Whiskey on July 15, 16, and 17, 2016, and authorize the mayor's signature, as detailed in the special events director's summary, to reflect the consensus of the special events committee contingent upon the listed conditions. Item N is the approval of a special event permit for the 2016 Green Cruise, which will be held this year on Saturday, August 13, 2016, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, as, also as detailed in the special event director's summary, to reflect the consensus of the special event committee contingent upon the listed conditions. Item O is the approval of a special event permit for the Funky Ferndale Art Fair on September 23, 24, and 25 of this year, as detailed in the event director's summary, to reflect the consensus of the special event committee contingent upon the listed conditions. Item P is the, item P is the approval to pay the Oakland County Treasurer invoice for a lost 800 megahertz portable radio for a total of $3,103.45 charged to the Fire Department's operations budget. Item Q is the approval of the listed accounts to be charged as a lien against the respective properties and to be collected as special assessments with the July 1, 2016 tax roll, as submitted by our Director of Finance. Item R is the approval of the Allied proposals in the amount of $23,299 to paint and drywall the city hall lower level and council chambers, and that the DPW Director be authorized to sign the proposal, the total expense to be charged to the General Fund Facilities Maintenance Account. Item S is the approval of the Allied proposal of $9,805 to replace the building signage and lettering at the fire stations 1 and 2, and that the DPW Director be authorized to sign the proposal, to be charged to the General Fund Facilities Maintenance Account. Item T is the approval of the low bid of $3,474, no, I'm sorry, $3,474,408.75 of Proline Asphalt Paving Corporation to perform the 2016 paving improvement project, to be charged to our Road Park Bonds Capital Account. Lot different, $3,003,000. Item U is the approval of the purchase of a Vacal Street Sweeper from Southeastern Equipment Company at a cost of $50,834.32 annually over five years, and that the mayor be authorized to sign the finance agreement pending approval of the city attorney, to be charged to the General Fund Public Service Department Vehicle Purchase Fund. V, item V is the approval of the purchase of a Case Tractor Loader from Southeastern Equipment Company at a cost of $37,707.39 annually over five years, and that the mayor be authorized to sign the financing agreement pending approval from the city attorney, also to be charged to the General Fund Public Service Department Vehicle Purchase Fund. Item W, W is the approval to adopt a resolution supporting the Regional Transit Authority of Southeast Michigan Master Plan and endorsing a Coalition for Transit, as submitted by our Mayor Protem. And finally, item X, approval of the bills and payroll, as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
Clarification questions?
Yes.
For items U and V, are these, is the street sweeper and the tractor loader replacement vehicles, or are these additional vehicles?
Lloyd, if you'd like to address that question, please?
Yes. Yes, they are replacing existing vehicles, and they, the existing vehicles are well beyond their lifespan, 16 and 21 years old, I believe. And so it's, and it does, what's interesting about it is not only does it provide a better working condition for the people that go out and sweep the streets, but it's also much more efficient. The newer sweeper has some options that will make it quieter, less dust, greater capacity, so we'll be able to get more done when the sweeper is out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Floyd. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I had, just wanted to make some comments about the RTA and ACT campaign, and I can do that after.
Yep, ACT or motion and support would be great. Yep, is there a motion?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. All right. Councilwoman Piana, Mel?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that the city is expressing support for the Coalition for Transit campaign, as well as the Regional Transit Authority's master plan, which was released a couple weeks ago, which shows about how the region create a rapid, reliable, and regional system to connect people to jobs and amenities throughout the region. And the November ballot will have this on there for people to choose to support funding the RTA to create the system. And for years prior to all of us being on council, we've been advocating for transit to improve the Woodward Corridor and connect the east and west side of Ferndale. And I think that the time is now, and the time is here. And I encourage people to learn about the Regional Master Transit Plan, as well as the Coalition for Transit. And I also wanted to say thank you to Metro Matters, who received a grant from the Kresge Foundation to support the creation of municipal resolutions in support of the campaign. And so they're the ones who authored this and are supporting the cities around the region, who want to express publicly how they're going to be supporting the campaign and why. So I just wanted to pull that out.
Excellent.
Just, if I may, through the chair, clarification. Is Buwanadon Hunt's family here? Do we want to read that resolution?
He is, and I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope. I was going to read it, and I think you're his brother. Is that right, sir?
Sure.
Why don't you come on up? We have a resolution that we would like to read in recognition and honor of your brother, and then I'll present that to you and give you an opportunity to say a few words, if you like. Very good. So the resolution reads as follows: Honoring Buwanadon Hunt. I, Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's condolences to the family of Buwanadon Hunt. Buwanadon Hunt was a longtime resident of Ferndale and an integral member of our community. He operated Buwanadon's pet shop after serving in the U.S. Army during the Korean War, and hosted a local TV show to share his knowledge and love of animals. He later moved to Kenya and established the Kenya Game Ranch, an animal orphanage, with his wife Iris and actors William Holden and Stephanie Powers. Buwanadon Hunt was a credit to this community, and to his family, and it is with deep sorrow that we mourn his loss. And so some of our newer residents may not remember, but if you've been around for any length of time, that pet store was a fixture on Woodward, and the TV show for younger people was a fixture as well. And it's with great sorrow that we hear of your brother's passing. If you, if you go to the microphone, then everyone at home will be able to hear you, too, sir, and then I'll present this for you, if you don't mind, but...
Well, if you know where the Emery is at Troy and Woodward, that's where Don started out back in 1949, when he graduated from St. James. He bought the business with a partner, but in those days, it was called the Ferndale Feed and Pet Supply. And then a few years later, he moved the store down to where the pool hall is, just a couple doors down. And he was there until, I believe, 1962, and it was during that time that he got the TV show. And then in '62, he moved it down to the, the last location, which was just past St. James.
That's where I remember it, yeah.
Yeah. And it was there for 42 years. Altogether, it was open for over 50, 55 years, I think. It closed in 2004. But thank you for the resolution.
Well, we, your brother's memory lives on here, and we appreciate you coming tonight to share that with us as well.
And he, he had his funeral service just a few days ago with Father Chateau at St. James.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
So come on up, I'll give you this. Maybe Kira can get a photo of us and...
While you're doing that, if I may, through the chairs, and I only raise this because it just doesn't happen very often. I've only been here 12 years, but the number... I've only been here 12 years, but the number of long-term residents that have approached me since the news broke of his passing, it just struck me how profoundly meaningful he was to this community and especially with how he treated the kids as people were growing up, coming in through his shop, there was always something to see, they always felt welcome. I mean, just an integral, integral part of this community and I can't thank you family enough for the gift that the city's gotten. Again, we do a lot of resolutions and it just doesn't happen that people randomly call and say, oh, you're not going to believe this. It's really, I wish I could have met him, he sounds like an outstanding individual.
All right, is there any other discussion or comments on the consent agenda? If not, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And, sorry, Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Consent agenda is adopted. Now, moving on to the regular agenda, item A is the consideration to confirm the appointments of Summer Really and Sharon Chess to the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2017. Yes, Jan Martin?
Chair, I'll introduce this. We have, I'm really excited, we have two great applicants for the Arts and Culture Commission. Summer, who I know many of you or all of you will remember who used to work at the DDA, currently works at the bank here in town. And Sharon Chess is, if you watch city council with any level of regularity, you know she's involved in the orchestra or the band. And she's a previous member of the Arts Commission, has some passion around funding in the future for different arts organizations and has asked to rejoin the group. So with the consent of the Arts Commission Chair and Board, or and Commission, I'd like to recommend we approve both of these for appointment.
So move, is that a motion?
So I would like to move that we confirm the appointment of Summer Really, thank you, and Sharon Chess to the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2017.
Is there support? Support by Leaks May, all right. Moved by Martin, supported by Leaks May. Any discussion on that either? Appreciate both of their willingness to serve.
Yep.
All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Item C is the consideration of 1720 Dover rezoning application. Justin, that's you again.
Yes. So the applicant has requested to rezon the parcel at 1720 Dover Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Two Family Residential to permit future construction of a two-family dwelling. The existing site is a 5,600 square foot vacant lot at the corner of Dover and an alley. The parcel is just south of some C2 general commercial property on West Nine Mile adjacent to some R1 zone property to the south and west on Dover. And then also, you probably recognize this area as directly adjacent to the former American Legion Hall which was also rezoned last, earlier this year from R1 to R3. The area is cited in the master plan as low-density residential for land use purposes which this potential use would qualify as. The applicant was before the planning commission in May for the rezoning request. And prior to the public hearing, the applicant discussed, proposed rezoning with the neighbors and the applicant's actually proposing to live in one of these two-family units as well. Planning Commission recommended council approval of the rezoning due to the site's location and then also, you know, the planning commission and council as well are very protective of the residential districts in the city and being that this is sort of a transitional use from the businesses on West Nine Mile to the neighborhood, they felt that a two-family dwelling really fit with everything that is the goal as part of the low-impact residential use. So, here to answer any questions, but this is, just a reminder, this is not a public hearing, but.
If I may, as part of the planning commission, the planning commission is very supportive of this idea, I think for two additional reasons. One, the owner has some very creative ideas about what to do.
Clearly, it's an interesting project.
Very exciting and interested in about what he wants to do, but also his sensitivity, we're also very protective of trees and there's a very large tree on that property that unfortunately is not going to survive this. And he has made a particular point to indicate, and you have a slide in your packet on this, that he is going to repurpose the material from bringing that tree down into the construction of the home and furniture. So I think very environmentally sensitive as well, so the planning commission was very taken with the idea.
Other comments?
Through the chair, I was on the planning commission when he first came to, when the applicant first came to present to the planning commission on his concept. And I think the planning commission has definitely addressed, I think, the concerns for this area and I'm really excited about the design. I think it's really unique and I think is appropriate for the corner in which it's being proposed.
Other comments or questions of council or the public?
I believe that city council approved the rezoning request for 1720 Dover Street, Sidwell number 242533229042, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Two Family Residential with the findings that are listed in the packet as well as the conditions the applicant was scheduled to place, plan for staff review and administrative approval at a future date.
I support.
So moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any additional comments or questions?
Yes, once you move in, it would be great to come and look at your new house and if you have an open house. I am. No, when you, no, when you have a different type of housing come into your community, I think it's important to see what it is and I think that just interests me.
I was just going to go.
I have a little bit more, you know, social grace than just going to knock, like asking right up front. Hi, I love you and your house.
Well, if there's really no curtains on those windows, I think we're going to be able to see exactly what's going on. Right there, that's that. Yeah, I'm sorry, councilman Pollocka.
I have a simple, small request. Since you do have to take that tree down, would you consider planting another one somewhere else on the property?
I would, yes.
That would be lovely, thank you.
Might be lovely.
That would be awesome.
All right, other questions or comments? Good. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thank you. Next item is regular agenda, item D, which is the consideration of 1201 Woodward Heights rezoning application. Justin, you're up again.
Yes, this is how you know that we are going through a master land use plan process.
Right.
We have two rezonings in a row, but I think both of these sort of meet the intent of future land use that we are looking at through the master plan and from the previous master plan. So 1201 Woodward Heights is proposed to be rezoned from R2 Single Two Family to Mixed Use Two to permit the future construction of a mixed-use development. Site's currently a vacant lot at the corner of Woodward Heights in Grayson. You'll recognize this area from earlier this year when the applicant proposed and council approved rezoning, excuse me, this was last September, approved rezoning of the currently developed site, the Torquay Sushi Building at 1225 Woodward Heights to Mixed Use Two. So the applicant's trying to continue that consistency of Mixed Use Two zoning and as you well know, Hilton is full of the Mixed Use Two zoning as well. So the master land use plan identifies the area as urban residential for land use purposes. Currently, the plans proposed include upper-level residential as part of the development as well. So at the May meeting, planning commission held a public hearing on this particular request and recommended council approve the request of rezoning with a unanimous vote due to the contiguous development, the site location, and adjacency to other mixed-use residential and retail parcels as well. Staff echoes that recommendation and should council approve the request, the property owner would be required to return to the planning commission for site plan review and potentially approval.
And Joe, I know that you're here, I don't know if you want to add anything to that or just wave and say hello, it's your choice.
Well, I think, good evening, everybody. With the excitement that I listened to about the Libranoid Corridor, the Hilton Corridor, I think, has equally, if not more so, opportunity to really become something different and add to the community. My wife and I are very excited. Currently, we have a tenant in that building, but looking ahead and certainly through discussions I've had with the tenant, there's going to be an opportunity as time goes on to do something there. And what is currently proposed is an ideal, lower-level, potentially of the commercial slash residential building would be a community-based kitchen where different artisans might be preparing some of their goods. And then the restaurant would be next door and that would be repurposed as a restaurant. And certainly, some of those artisans would feed into that restaurant, so just trying to make it symbolic. We're also sensitive to parking, certainly that is always on everybody's mind. Combining the two lots will help serve that purpose as well as just make both opportunities that much more successful, I think.
Just a question, Joe, councilor, Mayor Protam, Piana would like an invitation when the community kitchen opens.
There'll be a tasting.
You're all so sassy today.
I'm just covering you.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Joe. Congratulations on the new place up in Orient, right?
Lake Orient, yeah.
Lake Orient, yes.
Thank you.
All right, questions or comments? Well, we need a motion first unless there's questions of clarification.
I move that we, the city council approve the rezoning request for R2, from R2 Single Two Family Residential to Mixed Use Two, MXD-2 for 1201 Woodward Heights, Sidwell number 24-25-27-284-010, along with the findings that are listed below as well as the conditions.
Excellent. Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Leaks May and supported by Pollocka. All right, any comments, questions, concerns?
I'll just add for my planning commission hat that again, we were very supportive of what was brought forward, particularly the fact you considered parking, which was great. And also, just to personally thank you for your continued investment and reinvestment in Ferndale, that was very much appreciated.
Look forward to it.
I'm curious, the first floor retail, are you building that as open space and then going to divide it up as necessary or were you planning on doing specific two spaces?
I don't believe that it will ever be divided up. I think it'll be more a commercial-based kitchen area is most of the conversations I've had, certainly in the areas in which, for ourselves, even with our expansion going north, we do need some additional space. So it will be, it won't be a retail space per se where there's going to be tables, chairs, anything of that sort. If anything, it's likely to be a small orders and that round. It won't be separate, it's a no-brainer design, it's a, I think, a few different entities within that, but.
Great, thank you. Well, I don't need a tour, but I'd like the recipe for your hummus.
Wait till he gets his.
Wow.
Wait till he gets his pass.
That sounds like a bribe. All right.
Just through the chair. I just wanted to say that, one, I absolutely love Anita's Kitchen. So I'm just very excited that you're expanding your business opportunities here in Ferndale and it's nice to see our businesses doing as well as yours and it's nice to see you expanding in an area that deserves the development. Thank you.
All right, with that, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, the item is adopted. I'll be waiting on my hummus recipe. Item M is the consideration of a purchase agreement for 3331 Harris Street. And April is going to take that.
Over the last few years, very often during tax, during the tax foreclosure season, the county will often offer the city a first right of refusal for any properties that might go into foreclosure. Over the last few years, we've actually obtained quite a few properties. One of the major goals that council has had for the last couple of years is to actually try to sell off some of the properties that we will not eat, that we will not need and can be used in a better way. With that, we have a, we have actually three items, the next three items on the agenda. Justin and I divided and conquered, I took the residential, he took the commercial properties. We have, I think, five residential altogether for sale and I think two right now, commercial properties. Three of them are on the agenda for tonight. What we have done is we listed the residential properties with Jim Schaefer and Associates. He went through and then established through comparables, a listing price. On the Harris property, it was listed for $20,000, on the Emwill property, it was listed for $25,000. Both of those, both of those listing prices were offered, we had multiple offers on the properties and both properties, we did receive offers that met the listing price. So with that, the, I'm kind of doing both of these at once since they're both very similar.
Yeah, you have a lot of discussion on both of them, we'll vote separately.
Yep, and then both the Harris property and the, I hope I said it right, Emwill? Is that how you say it?
Emwill, yep.
Okay. Both of them were, are considered and zoned R1 for single family and they will continue to remain that way through this process. One of the caveats that we did place on the property was that they have two years to build a residential home on that property and if they do not, it reverts back to the city. So there is a, an incentive for them to build on it, which is the whole point, we don't want to be maintaining that property and both of them are buildable sites.
Would we have to pay them the money back?
No.
No, it's a.
That's a real incentive.
Mm-hmm, yep, absolutely.
Indeed.
Right, so there is no rezoning needed for either one of these properties. Again, they were, I put in the packet, Jim Schaefer provided quite a variety of comparables, but he took the, particularly each area was, you know, a different price point and he felt that the listing price was fair and accurate. So again, before you, the Harris property was listed at 20 and Emwill at 25 and both, both received offers that met that listing price and both will have reverters on there that have to be single-family home built within the next two years.
All right. Are there questions of either? We'll vote on them separately, but are there questions on either of these properties, either the Harris or Emwill Street property?
Just a comment, I was the one, when this came to council a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago, I was the one who asked for evidence of comparable pricing so that we know we were getting the best offer. And so I appreciate staff taking that in consideration and working with our local real estate agent to produce the evidence, so thank you. I feel more comfortable now.
And I would say, I think we had done that, we just hadn't presented that to council, so I don't want to make it sound like council hadn't done that. They had.
No, thank you for the correction, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I just, but your packet was not robust enough at the last meeting and I had to leave early as well, so.
So that's fine. All right, other questions or comments?
I have a process question that I was asked and I didn't have the answer. So for other properties, for example, police, when we acquire property, we do auctions for cars, et cetera. I was asked why we don't auction off property the same way. If we acquire the property, how come it's not actually auctioned off, rather it's put up for sale? A reason?
No, I mean, the city could use either methodology.
Okay.
And I think, I want to speak for the city manager, but the thought was to mobilize and use resources of a local real estate expert to really shop the properties to make sure that a fair and appropriate offer was received by the city.
Good question.
Because ultimately, you have to use some agent, they have to use some agent to purchase it and we have to use an agent to sell it, so, okay, thank you.
Are we moving or?
Questions or, oh, I mean, yes, motion would be in order on the Harris Street property.
I move to approve the purchase agreement for the sale of 3331 Harris Street for $20,000 for city parcel 24, 25, 26, 10209 and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the purchase agreement and proceeds to be placed in the community and economic development line item and to be transferred at the end of the 2016 fiscal year and committed in fund balance for future use.
fund balance for future use.
Is there support?
Support.
All right. Moved by Piana, supported by...
For purposes of discussion, at one point, we had a discussion about sale of city property revenue going to other...
We did. And so, that is why, and I was going to make that point. So, thank you, Councilmember Martin. That is why the language was construed differently than you've normally seen it, but the Community and Economic Development Line, that is a special line that we're going to sort of park this funds in now for a possible future use. So it is being reserved until council has an opportunity to discuss how this money might be used in the future.
Thanks. The last sentence threw me off, so I didn't want to...
That's what it was...
And just a quick lesson. When you commit something to fund balance, you have to, there has to be a resolution to pass uncommitted, so that way that we can track it through finance, so that it doesn't get lost.
But that was the intent of that language, yes. But, good question. All right. So, if you moved and supported, final questions? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollica?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes. Thank you. And now, is there a motion on the consideration of a purchase agreement for the 906 ML Street property?
I move that we approve the purchase agreement for the sale of 906 ML for $25,000, City Parcel 24, 25, 33, 42, 9022, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase agreement for the sale proceeds to be placed in the Community and Economic Development Line Item 101, 371, 673, and to be transferred at the end of the 2016 fiscal year and committed in fund balance for future use.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollica. Any final comments or questions? Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes. Thank you. That item is adopted. And now, our final item, which is a similar item, but it just happens to be commercial property, and that is a purchase agreement for the Hilton Road Parcel 25, 34, 278, 056. And...
Correct.
Justin?
Yes. This particular parcel is located on Hilton Road, just near East Marshall. The parcel is a vacant, vacant lot, .14 acres, so quite small. And in this instance, Matt Osekki, agent for CBRE, was, assisted us in listing the property and then also providing comparables as well that were a part of your packet. The property was listed for sale at $35,000. The city staff did receive two offers at the list price. The original buyer, he did rescind his offer. He was not comfortable with the reverter clause that we included, and so opted to withdraw his offer. The current buyer is actually an existing business owner in Ferndale, owner of the adjacent space, commercial space, and Waterworks Plumbing. And this potential purchase is contingent upon being developed as an accessory parking lot for the commercial space, retail space. I believe there's a martial arts studio and another use there. And that accessory use meets, is consistent with mixed-use-two zoning district, the existing zoning district. And as part of a requirement, that surface parking lot would need to be constructed within three years of the date of closing. Purchase agreement was in your packet, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Help me understand the conditions that the original, successful applicant was not comfortable with.
The same, it's the same, it's similar to the residential properties, just developing the property within the existing zoning district within three years. You know, I can't say for certain that this particular buyer was speculating, but it could have been, could have been a situation. We really wanted someone to develop this property and, you know, add some value to the Hilton Corridor.
The downside is we're not really, I mean, we're developing it into a parking lot. We're not developing it into a structure.
Right.
Which is why that proposal was more attractive in the first place. So, do you think that this parcel is just sized and appropriately built something that...
Correct. Yeah. You know, I mean, there...
Matt shaking his head too, yeah.
There, there, I mean, there's a vacant lot adjacent to it that is not owned by the city, that, you know, if someone were to acquire both of those lots maybe at the same time, then maybe you could kind of put some, you know, commercial or residential development there, but it's such a small lot there by itself that it makes it pretty challenging.
Thank you. So we do need a motion. But I can't make it.
Councilman Pollica, why don't you take it away?
Because I'm not there yet.
Okay.
I move that we approve the purchase agreement for the sale of the vacant property on Hilton Road near East Marshall Street for $35,000, City Parcel 24, 25, 34, 278, 056, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase agreement and proceeds to be placed in Community and Economic Development Line Item 101 dot 371 dot 679, and to be transferred at the end of 2016 fiscal year and committed to, I'm sorry, and committed in fund balance for future use.
Support.
Moved by Pollica and supported by Martin. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All right. See you in none. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes. Thank you. That item is adopted. Justin, I think, I think you're good for a while.
All right.
Well, you know, while you're there, anything for call to council?
Um, sure. A quick master land use plan update, I guess. We, as you, as you well know, public comment is kind of, Hamilton Anderson has been collecting and poring through all of that. They came up with some initial goals and recommendations, which you've initially received. And later this month, we'll be holding a planning commission workshop to discuss all of those potential recommendations and, you know, go through any revisions. You know, it's been, it's been a long process for this plan, but we really want to get it right and set us on the path forward for, you know, excellent future for a number of initiatives. And so I think that that meeting will be a good group discussion, and then hopefully later this summer, we'll move forward with adoption. So.
Thank you. Any questions? Justin? All right. Chief Collins, anything else for the good of the community this evening?
Just one thing, this evening, Your Honor, in light of the tragedy from Orlando, I want to advise council that we are stepping up patrols in the downtown area at the bars. We are visiting all the bar owners, as well as affirmations. We're doing walkthrough checks through there throughout the day. We have, in light of the vigil that may occur tomorrow, we have turned that information over to CEMIC and to MIAC, which are collection agencies for intelligence. They will be monitoring all social media, any type of Twitter feeds or anything of that type of information that comes in. I'm happy to say at no ti, at this time, there are no threats, no credible threats, no threats whatsoever. However, we are keeping our eye on that, and we'll be keeping a very close attention on that. We intend to put extra patrols in the downtown area for this weekend. We'll, we'll monitor that as we go forward to see if we're, we'll continue that activity going forward. We do encourage residents, if they do see anything suspicious, to please contact the police department. We will obviously react appropriately to any of tho, any type of suspicious activity. And that's, one of the things that the sheriff has been in contact with me yesterday and today. He has offered all support, so if we run into a manpower situation, he will forward us whatever manpower needs we may need as we go forward in the next couple of weeks. If there's any questions about what we're doing, be happy to answer.
I don't have any questions about that, but through the chair, I just want to compliment you and your team. It seems the community policing outreach activity is very quickly already quite visible between your booth that you had at Ferndale Pride, as well as a visible presence at Trunk and Treasure slash art, you know, the, the art fair. So it's really nice to see your officers out in such a productive manner, building relationships. Not that they weren't productive before, but this is clearly something that I think is going to be great for this community. And literally, within a couple of weeks of you talking about it, it's, it's full in action. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, chief. Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening? All right. How about from finance? Nothing this evening? Community and econ, community engagement and communications? I really didn't mean to slight your PowerPoints. I'm sure they're fabulous.
It was purely directed at Joe.
No, I think we should have like a little battle every single time. What do you think? City against library.
Down the con.
We can do it. I just wanted to give a brief update, let everybody know that it's newsletter time. We got the draft back today from our design assistant. And after an internal review in the next couple of days, should be going to print this week, and hitting residents hopefully within the next two weeks. In keeping with, kind of moving it forward and making sure that we're speaking directly to what people want to know, we've got this entire newsletter filled with information that was our most frequently requested information last July, August, and September. So, all the things that we're getting in social media and the calls that we're receiving, specifically about fire pits and residential burn permits, fireworks guidelines, tips for reducing auto theft in residential streets, bicycle-friendly downtown safety information, park and pavilion usage and rentals, important information about who to contact and when to contact in the case of flooding, storms, or other inclement weather, and of course, a calendar of upcoming events. So, that should be out shortly, and I want to encourage people to keep sending their questions our way, letting us know if there's information that they want to know about, because we're going to make sure that we include that in upcoming additions.
Excellent. Thanks, Karen. Yep. Look forward to seeing it.
Through the chair.
I just wanted to thank you for your responses on social media and how you're responding to the community. I see that you're on top of it. That way, I don't have to say anything. So, thank you. Yes, it is.
Thanks, Karen. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening? All right. Joe, anything from the Assistant City Manager slash Parking slash IT slash PowerPoint extraordinary?
Let's just say pretty much parking, which I do have a parking update. One, we're a couple months into the residential parking zone. I want to say we're about at an 80% to 85% adoption rate between all the zones for all the residential households. So far, we've received fairly positive feedback on the program and its, its success and its impacts for the residents. And that segues into something that we think will benefit them as kind of the next step with parking. We expect to reveal the new parking website live at the city council meeting, June 27. So we are expecting to reveal that new site. It would be called at that time, www.parkferndale.com. We will be promoting that with our wonderful communications director. And then the second announcement is, I would like to just extend congratulations to our Ferndale Police Department as well. I will be joining them with our colleagues with the Ferndale School District and Baker College to present nationally about the success of the Ferndale Early College Program, and specifically to their unique participation in instructing and working with the students enrolled in the criminal justice track of the program. They're just concluding their first year. It's been deemed a success, and we will be presenting at the Alliance for Innovation National Conference this week.
Awesome. That's great. Thanks, Joe. Thank you. All right. Marnie, anything from the city clerk's office?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to thank you for approving the increase for my election inspectors and to put out a call for more.
That would raise the salary.
The city is hiring up to 50 additional tech-savvy precinct inspectors for the August 2 primary and November 8 general elections. I just want to state that it's my belief that, as a city clerk, it's my most important duty is to make sure that we conduct fair, impartial, and well-organized elections. Lines are going to be long this year. That's a given. But with our community's help, I think we can really reduce the wait times. So I would just like to ask anybody out there to please consider taking time out of your regular schedule to join us. You'll receive paid training, competitive pay, and a sense of pride in helping your neighbors exercise their democratic right to vote. So please contact the city clerk's office if you would like to.
Maybe doughnuts from Daily Dynet if we can talk to Brian. All right. Well said. Thank you, Marnie. April, anything from the city manager's office this evening?
I know. Just one thing, piggybacking on the Early College Program, staff has just submitted our application for the Community and Excellence Awards for the ML Convention as well.
Great. All right. Dan, anything from a legal perspective? All right. Councilman Martin?
Nothing.
All right. Councilwoman Leaks May?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Pollica?
I have a couple things, actually. First, the, where Ferndale Hawes is supposed to be built, it's all fenced in there, but there's a wrought iron fence that's within the, the construction area. Are, is GPW going to take that down and repurpose that? Because that's expensive. And we pay for that.
Yes, we are. In addition, we're going to salvage as much of the landscaping as we can and possibly replant that. I'm...
It's going in my yard, though. That's why I didn't want you to bring it up. No.
Possibly relocate it to Fair Park. We're looking at providing some screening for the residents, and so, you know, I expect that to be, you know, successful.
Thanks. You might want to stay there.
Bring it on.
Because the last item is the outlet. We discovered last evening that the outlet out front, right underneath the...
Our key?
The, the display for our many public announcements. There's an outlet. There's an outdoor outlet. It's very, very sensitive, which tells me that it needs to be investigated.
It kept cutting on and off. In other words.
Yeah. I mean, the wind blew, and all of a sudden, we lost power.
Not a problem.
Okay.
All right.
And the last item is, I'm having a difficult time putting into words my thoughts and feelings about yesterday's tragedy. So I'm going to do, and I'm going to focus on what I do best, and that's thank people. Last night, we had a candlelight vigil that was organized by Julia Music, the mayor, and myself. And I want to take a minute to publicly, publicly thank several people who made the event happen flawlessly. First, I want to thank our police department for not blinking an eye when I walked into the station at 1:00 PM yesterday afternoon and said that we were going to have a vigil out in front in seven hours, and there could be hundreds of people coming out. They simply thanked me for letting them know and said they'll be prepared to support us in any way that they can. Chief Collins and Captain Polizolo for making sure that the department was present with full support, but at a comfortable distance. You made us feel protected, but not smothered. And thank you, chief, for cutting your vacation short and coming home early to, to be a part of the event last night. Thank you to Jim Poole and Renaissance Vineyard Church for allowing us to use over 250 vigil candles for the event. You saved me hours from having to run around the stores finding candles, which I couldn't. Jim and the church never hesitate to step forward when our community asks for help. My crafting partner, Eddie Mitchell, who sat with me for hours at Julia Music's house, at her dining room table with super glue or, or hot glue, making these morning rainbows, which was a lot harder than, and a lot more time than I took, that I expected. Thank you, Kara, and who was keeping city social media information updated. And a huge thank you to Michael Larry, who came in on his day off, set up the sound system, and helped manage the crowd. Thank you to all the speakers who spoke about love, healing, and forgiveness, and to all the people who came out, who wanted to be together with other people who were in pain to help start the healing process. Most of all, I want to thank you, Dave and Julia, for allowing me to join both of you in creating such an incredible event. At the, at the very least, I'm grateful to have been able to get off the couch and not have to be forced to sit in front of a TV being hypnotized by the same information over and over again. But I'm truly grateful to being able to help create something beautiful for my community from a tragic, tragic and senseless, senseless event. So, thank you.
Thanks. Great. Thank you. Mayor Protem, Piana?
Just one thank you. I want to thank the city for sending flowers to my father-in-law's funeral. You had my mother-in-law in tears, and me too. So I just want to say thank you for that acknowledgement.
You're welcome. All right. I had a couple of things, but Councilman Pollica, you said better than I, the thank yous that I wanted to. I just also want to thank you because you stepped right... I just also want to thank you, because you stepped right up and jumped in, and thank you for helping to make it a, a truly powerful and empowering event, and I think it's one that the community needed, and I, I hope appreciated, so, thank you for that. And the second thing is, I just want to throw a congratulations out to a couple of our business owners. Jay Spiro of Magisha Martial Arts was nominated by someone, we're not sure who, to be a speaker presenter at the United States of Women Summit in Washington DC. And it's a, it's a pretty big deal. This is convened by the White House, and it's just, the summit, the summit is going to rally everyone together, women and everyone, to celebrate what women have achieved and how they can take action going forward. It's a, it's quite an honor to be invited, and Jay, congratulations. And additionally, Cheryl Salinas Tucker of Rouge Makeup is also attending as a Goldman Sachs 10,000 Small Business Detroit alumni. So two very talented women from our community are going to be representing us in Washington DC, and I just wanted to congratulate the both of them and wish them well. And with that...
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I'd like to make a motion that we move to closed session for purposes of considering materially exempt from discussion or disclosure by state and federal statute pursuant to MCL 15 dot 268 dot 8. And I'm sorry, that came out more forcefully than intended.
I'm just, it was just a forceful reminder to you. Is there a support? All right, moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka. Any discussion? Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Council is in closed session. You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here.
Oh, okay.
Good, so we roll.